United States America to the Republic of the United States, one nation under our own individual liberty and justice.
Ms. Fernandez?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Ms. McNair? Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
You have a call?
No, looks like anybody.
Well, I have one motion to approve all the prior green rate, but in this little more accepted from lines, I said, I gotta go to, I don't think I can decide on this one. So let's do the three excluding uniform, right?
A motion to approve the common units self-provided by.
Second?
Second.
Question? In favor?
Aye.
Vote a move. I have a motion to, to the April ninth, twenty nine part of the.
A motion to approve the April ninth, twenty twenty four ready for financing.
Second?
Second.
Question? In favor?
Aye.
Can you there?
Yep.
All right.
Right.
You said you weren't there.
Well, I was there for the last two minutes, so I don't know about the last ten minutes.
Right.
Yeah. Move the transfer hundred nine thousand six hundred dollars as detailed in the complete spreadsheet for the attached minutes, which we recovered higher than budgetary expenditures and then the buyer claims.
Okay. Questions? I have just a couple of questions, but nothing. On the truck rental?
Yeah.
Because we use smaller trucks in the month.
Truck rental is a listen order. That's actually the outsourced supply.
Okay.
So it's called the Saxon things where the highway department focuses on the roads.
You're thinking, is that the nursing that they got all the time applied over the last few months that we've seen?
Actually, the cost of holding gear until just the timing of the direction.
So I look at the latest actuals, or really don't need that one problem. They're pretty close, but.
Well, if we need some of their salaries, they'll be getting what I should.
So we have.
Yes.
I had a question. This is the, um, this one has the, um, transfer of twenty five thousand for the, uh, from over overtime, plowing overtime to pay for, is that contractual, uh, contractors to plow?
Yes.
So we had less snow than we thought we did. So we have excess budget in our plowing, but the contractors ran over by twenty five thousand dollars. Does that make any sense to anybody? It doesn't to me.
It's more indicative, I think, of the, the budget number rather than necessarily the actuals. So I think we didn't anticipate as much outsourced plowing and then were heavier on the storm overtime. And I think, uh, this year in the twenty five budget, you've actually scaled back storm overtime, which would be overtime for our staff. And we left truck rental. So I think it's, it's more about the level it was budgeted. So there was an assumption there's that plus rates go up too. We haven't gone up in several years for the truck rental. It did go up a little, but.
I just want to make sure that they're tracking the contractors properly.
Yep. And they definitely are. I mean, there's individual invoices for the storms with the hours with the rates, and they are definitely reviewed in the highway public works department.
Okay.
All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the transfer of thirty thousand dollars for the parks, recreation, lifetards slash school worker camp to the public grounds usability study, you can vote from the general fund for feasibility study begun in order to the, 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 the more.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
This is the one, sorry, this is the, this is the project. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So this is the project about the East Brown Pool, right?
To move forward. The complex itself.
Okay.
Sorry, I'll defer to what you asked the specific question. So our, our goal is to get the feasibility study done as fast as we possibly can, so we can get that over to Jim Mahoney, so we can apply for a five hundred thousand dollar steep grant. This way that'll be included into the project. That's our goal. Thank you.
Great.
Sorry, Ro. You guys gonna hear me?
No, no, I, I heard you. I heard you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The steep, the steep grant is that that'll be in next year's?
Yeah.
Consider a matching thing in. So that Tom Conforth has all of like, uh, suggested they should at this point.
They take it off? Um, I think I looked like, I think they have fifty thousand or two fifty, they took two hundred.
Do you know what the matching is on this? For a half million dollars?
Typically, you're within ten percent. It was an interesting move because they were saying, they were scheduled, uh, trying to bring this up, but they scheduled a non-budget appropriation of eighty hundred thousand dollars for a match. So they took two hundred thousand out of the budget and now supposedly take eight hundred thousand of fund balance for a match, so.
Right. I'm like, that was there in half, but. Pumped out.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the transfer sixteen thousand dollars to the maintenance repair account, computer support account, sixty one hundred, the internet services account, twenty nine hundred, the vehicle fuel account, seven thousand, following the general plan, quality person.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
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 Move to approve the transfer fourteen thousand to the storm-related orphanage account to the veterans memorial park account and public grounds department, both in the general fund, public replacement fund, that veterans memorial park.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion?
These are the ones that are in the, uh, yep. The compliments are like, yep.
Is that going to be enough?
Well, that was the most plan I could do about my comments. I, I don't know if any of you saw that, which is eloquent viewpoint of the vendor, but, uh, the changes, I think, really warranted. They basically warranted exact, pretty exact date of.
Really?
They, they pretty much guaranteed that they will last three years and then they will not. Not repairable, not repairable. So he won't be so different.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the transfer of a hundred fifty thousand dollars into the water main and reminding camp for the Meriden potash water connection account, open the Berlin water, potash water.
Second?
Second.
Question?
Is this all for eight, twelve hundred fifty? Ray is here. It's four years. The intent here is to grow, basically connect the Meriden so that we would potentially work on a land efficient tank, because we're at education, they don't land efficient tank as the road issue we did to think itself. They're, they're not paying, they're in need of that in connection. Oh, actually, they are, they're, they're not in need of it at the moment. We're in need of it more. But the, the idea would be is that once the connection is, they are considering purchasing water plants, the hydraulics and such that we can get water from them without a pump. But they would have to pump water to muster them. And, uh, we've discussed it initially, and it looks like it would be interesting purchasing water for us.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to appropriate sixty two thousand seven hundred sixty two dollars senior center hardwood grant for the senior center hardwood grant again, special grants and donations.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to appropriate seven hundred eighty thousand dollar community connectivity grant, community activity grant, two oh, two, three account.
Okay.
Second.
Question?
What are we doing with this money?
Pardon?
What are we doing?
Um, this grant is going to be, there's a few roads that are on the agenda items, uh, on four rod, from winding Meadow Drive to Norton, personal lab from Carbo Lane to Percival Field, Robbins Road from Town Drive to Timberwood, Kensington Road from Norton to Seapole New and Norton, east and west of Cole Lane.
Perfect. Thank you.
And does this grant have a match?
Uh, this one does not. Connectivity is not. We are required to do the engineering. Back in December, you approved the non-budget implementation of several elements. Seventy five thousand of that, one hundred fifty five thousand was for the engineers and designers. The bids actually came in light. Um, and so we're looking to repurpose that money for a motion of the agenda of the council in next year, they're going to do it, they're going to do it in support of installing the generator of senior housing slash senior center, personal. Yeah, this is the piece.
Great. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Kevin. Um, quickly, a few up here. So the state actually finished their budget work on May eighth, the final budget runs came through, and we were essentially right on what's expected of city aid in the general funding budget. So that's always encouraging. Um, in the update, the financial narrative that I have, it's the first time showing the need for this pension, you will see that at this stage, given the seven, one, twenty twenty three liability, that the actuaries probably, we are at this point, be four percent funded. So that is a great start. Certainly hope to be there. We knew we weren't going to be a hundred percent because the volumes weren't sufficient to cover, but we will get there over time. Uh, so in good shape there. Uh, just mentioned earlier, there is a public hearing on this one course about appropriating eight hundred thousand dollars of, I'm sorry, public hearing before the town council meeting. At six forty five, uh, next Tuesday, which many first at six forty five, the council chamber, it's a non-budget appropriation of, thanks, of eight hundred thousand dollars for a match, a three point two million dollar grant that has opened up, states have a special transportation grant they've opened up. We are trying to pursue it. The amount that is requested needs to be quite substantial. So, um, in reviewing things, Jim Mahoney actually put the whole document together. Basically, this would allow us to accelerate a lot of the sidewalk work that was intended to be done. They essentially put it into four tiers. The first two tiers are the area of focus on the grant. The first tier is finishing the sidewalk around the school areas. So things that you would think of whether like gaps in general school neighborhoods. And then the second area where there would be some of the work is heading up towards the seniors and the math. So continually making potentially this area town more walkable. So, uh, really leveraging the eight hundred thousand to get three point two million, but it is eight hundred thousand. Fun fact is that we're bringing forward. So next Tuesday at six forty five, there's an opportunity for citizens to speak and, and to vote. You don't want the non-what you want or don't want to not budget the appropriation.
But we just approved a seven eighty in the Dallas sidewalk.
Separate grant. This is a total of different.
Right.
Usually an additional three point two million of safe money, eight hundred thousand of opening with four million dollars.
So it's kind of a surprise?
Um, yeah, it was. And this happens sometimes with safe, we'll be working on programs that come out with fairly short turnaround. So.
What does that do to our projections from that?
Well, on the numbers, I actually inserted it. So on F eight, um, you'll see all the non-budget that have been approved already. The ADEP that's in the budget, the requested capital removed from the original budget proposal, eliminated, and then this eight hundred thousand. Based on the current projections of expenditures, based on interest, vacant positions, et cetera, and then using the FY twenty four and then FY twenty five budget as the council sent forward to the way the seniors are bringing it, it would move it down instead of being around thirteen percent, it'd be around thirteen percent. Still above the eleven percent floor.
Is there a master plan on sidewalk? Are we just jumping on every plan and every penny we fit sidewalks and start going everywhere in town, whether we do it or not?
Well, I think the master plans within the plant conservation and development to make it a more valuable community. Um, there is a lot of work. Jim has within his, within the, the work they did in support of the seniors and the elderly, the tearing that was done for this, in what areas of the town would be included?
I, I don't know the specifics. I've been having to jump in on it. I've got pretty lots of chatter on what's ever been just done on the public tab and throughout the job.
Money billers and that.
Yeah. Lot of Facebook chatter. Whatever.
And however you may feel, or if you're speaking to people, that's the point of the town meeting and the ability to vote. If you don't, if you think this is a good use of, again, the leverage, the pure financials at the point of putting eight hundred thousand dollars, getting three point two million is this terrific leverage. If, if this is, if the sidewalks are the priority, eight hundred thousand, maybe you want something else. I, I don't know. I'll see what my question is.
I, I think that's very valid. Now, it's one thing if you're behind bars. Sidewalks in your stores, right? And you're blocking the street. I'm not sure if there's much help with this, but you would.
Jeff Philno actually spoke at the council meeting about that. And one of Jeff Philno's roles, director of operations for the board of that, and one of his roles is transportation and the bus system, et cetera. He spoke about, um, they have various specific policies that are really based on safety. So it's not just distance, it's moving also being able to safely walk to the school. So even if you were to live, let's just say a hundred yards from school, there's no sidewalks, and you have to walk down a busy street, Norton Road, Kensington, Farmington, Hafen, they all have fair amount of traffic, especially in the morning. Uh, that's probably not a safe way for a child to walk to school, even if it's a short distance. So that's sort of an intent to be able to make it more useful. But I also don't know, I don't know if that would make more people go. But there is a policy within the board of that, and it's based really on its security.
There's no walking policy. Is that better than that? Distance, you know, you're supposed to walk with this sidewalks.
I'm not. And there are kids who do walk, but I think then that's really based on the kinds of safety. There, you have to cross areas where there is a sidewalk, the school isn't walking, doesn't want to put a child.
Um, I, I just like to say on this, I, I listened to the town council meeting, listened to, uh, Jeff Cugno, and I understand what he's saying, but I don't see the town or the board of education increasing in the number of students in any significant way that's going to cause any sort of, um, offset in the amount of students that are being bussed. I, we're putting sidewalks in, but we're getting a little carried away with how much we're spending on it. And I, I just don't think this is a practical use of the money.
And that's actually why I wanted to bring it up, just so you would know, if you weren't aware, that it is at the next council meeting on Tuesday, in the town meetings, you all have the right to go and vote.
These grants are specifically targeted on sidewalk and certain.
That's this particular. And, and the sidewalks, my understanding, and I'm certainly not an expert in this, but my understanding, sidewalks are, uh, kind of tangential to the affordable housing, the effort to be able to create environments where people are able to live in more affordable housing, walk, either to work, bus areas, and that. And so that's my understanding is why the state is pushing so hard for the affordable housing, the walkable, as well as the bus lines and all. It's also connected to making it so that people can live in other parts of the state.
If that's all these voters they're on, they're trying to already do, yeah, they're absolutely sound like a train station. There isn't any plan for, per se, for affordable housing, it's somebody who, the sidewalks, and the, 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 the housing is the land.
There won't be, I hope there's a document that can be shared with us to show which sidewalks, which, familiar?
I don't know, but I can follow up and see if Jim has something.
Thing is, nice to know where.
Yeah, I mean, it's about, what do you have an update? I'm just not sure.
No. And he does have a list of like the, the tiers or the zones, that maybe zoned it out in the four areas. I don't know if there's a map, but he certainly has to break down what the intended buckets are. I know that, um, and, and he certainly recorded it, so I'm going to paraphrase, but council of tenessa did ask the question, are we picking the areas around the school? Because that's the big push from the state. And Jim did say, yes, although it's still, I mean, the sake of kids is a priority. It's, it's for everybody, but I mean, part of this is playing into the priorities of the state. If the state is coming out with grants, they're, they're able to establish priorities of communities who want to go with those priorities that are, you know, that in them.
I guess.
Obviously, he knows the grants would really need to buy.
See, I, I guess my concern would be, I mean, it, it sounds like a good idea to put them in, but if no more kids are going to walk to school or even maybe to walk to school, then spend four, five hours there and sidewalks.
So. Yeah. So here's my five cents on this. Um, if you guys know Percival and even the streets that go up to Griswold, there are no sidewalks. It's not just kids walking on there. It's literally seniors with their dogs. It's people working out. It's people running. It's on the street and the cars have to get away. I don't think that I don't think, I know if it's does have to be school sidewalks or can it just be regular sidewalks for the town of Brown?
Well, these would be regular sidewalks. The school part was more the proximity, putting them in the proximity of the schools. So they would be regular sidewalks. It's just they're focusing, the first tier was focused leaning around the generals, the area of our schools.
I, I, I agree with the fact that, yeah, between busing, parents dropping off, and some kids will be welcome to school, but let's face it, and then it would be better bundled, or should I say, probably the wrong word to use, because a lot of these folks outside of school hours will be using the sidewalks, not just the schools, not just kids. During the summer is going to be regular citizens of Brown. So that's my five cents.
Yeah. Yeah. I will jump, Jim, see what I can get and share with you. Again, it's six forty five, town meeting next Tuesday, on the first. The only other thing I had in the agenda.
While we're still on, on balance page.
Yeah.
Does this, um, where you list, starting with large jumps on body replacement, does that encompass everything that was in tier one of the applicant budget?
This was actually all FY twenty four.
So there were nothing that we.
That you took out of this year's question?
Right.
No, that would all be embedded in the one, two fifty one, three twenty. That was tier one.
Okay.
This year's. So all of those listed out were FY twenty four, we told from fund balance in anticipation of twenty four year with.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Twenty three year with close.
Like twenty, twenty, twenty four, five, or six. So that's the one, two, five, one?
Yes. Basically, we, we weren't able to close the year by early fall. So did a non-budget appropriation to pull this power from balance, and then the twenty three closed, two three vanish. So the sixteen's artificially overstated, well, because the capital was fronted out of funds outlets in that place. And that's why we were able to stay in at around thirteen, fourteen percent level.
And let me ask another question. I mean, all those others, we still have to run on the preparation for those?
The requested capital that's in the other?
Yeah.
Um, ideally, we'd be able to do it through tiered transfers, but it may have to be an appropriation that we're not able to close the focus faster than it did in July. It's really going to depend on when.
All the ones that up above and red, you've already.
You've already solved. And the ADEP, the six would be who is in the budget, having adopted, obviously, the test, it's only about horrendous. And it's pumped out.
How come they haven't? Maybe I should ask. Have all of those been completed? The ones in red above? All of your purchases? No.
Timberland unforced bridges, no.
Okay.
Um, little people's playground, no, it is, it is all through, which is getting equipped, it will be this summer, expect, please, technically come last September, I'll call it, that's the, down at the end of the road here. Um, police stations are working process, resurfacing the basketball and tennis courts is supposed to be done this summer. That we appropriated over the winter, but that couldn't be done before eleven. Um, and the local grants, that was, we did not get the deep silver lake grant to, because that money you were covering, there's twenty five thousand at one fifty, we're also needing purpose to help with the generator installation with senior housing, I mean.
And we did, we did get the police vehicles.
We did, we police vehicle.
So we're not going to have any liability?
Whatever.
You said we're going to try to maintain this place with zero liability possible, right? New plan? Well, I might be.
Zero unbudgeted liability? Yeah, that's the goal.
So you're going one on one, that's sort of this, that's all the way in time, or I just.
Does, yeah, you, you recall during the budget, um, one finally moved over, there was a one point eight million dollar gap between what the officers had in the recent plan by anyone, actual real capital. So you funded one year of that. The second year is on this budget. We will over time get into that. It's a big, originally we agreed at ten years to pay that. So.
Um, hey, Kev, uh, Kevin, sorry.
Yeah.
One thing I don't see here is the police radios. Are we presuming that we're going to kick it over to FY twenty five before, or?
The radios were initially put into the bonding program. We may have to reach in, we may have to bond more than expected before we change the fund balance. Um, I projected six hundred thousand in the budget. The latest numbers from the state that I received were one point two million. At least the part where I went back and said, what is anything that may come out? They're still working through the numbers. Um, I believe there's a meeting, police mission meeting.
Uh, sorry, sorry. I'm sorry. Did you say one point two million?
Yes.
Are we getting new equipment at all? Like radios and stuff like that? All brand new equipment?
New equipment as well as, um, I believe some hardware to be put on there. So I, they're working with the state to finalize the list and put it all together so that we can then figure out the best way to fund it. But that's why it's not on here. It was, it was originally placed into the bonding program for the FY twenty five budget.
Okay. So we're missing a couple of things because we spent what, two million dollars a couple of years ago for the fire department. You have, upgrade all the radios and everything like that, and they don't have those line of sight issues. So either we're getting a great deal or we're not getting what we need. Like, that doesn't make sense to me.
This is to build coverage holes.
Correct. So two years, two, three years ago, yeah, two, three years ago, we had the same issue. We upgraded all the, the fire departments, the fire trucks, all the firefighters all got brand new radios to, and we don't have line of sight issues as the PD does. But we spent two million dollars doing it. So now it's one point two. My concern is either, either we got a fantastic deal from somebody or it doesn't make sense to me. The math does not make sense to me at all.
And, and.
At least the fire department, if not more, because we're dealing with the state towers. So.
Yeah. I, I did have a conversation with the chief and deputy, and they are pushing back as well to understand better because, uh, that, that number took them back too. That's the magnitude of it. And that's why it's not, it's not really being discussed yet because it's still, uh, being questioned, challenged, vet. And that's why it's not, it's not really being discussed yet, because it's still, uh, being questioned, challenged, vetted.
Okay.
An initial estimate, that's the amount of what it's going to be designed at, well, that is in the first dollar.
That, the expectation was one to two million to put in hours, to put in hours in town to.
And another thing, when we did the firehouses, we didn't use any kind of state property.
Right.
Everything is. Exactly, everything was done in town, so I maybe they should bring out the playbook, or have someone talk to Jim.
And that may be an alternative path that the town officials.
But then you left leveraging some firepower.
There was discussion of that early on, um, but I'll, I'll let, as they move further along, I'll let the, the deputy chief's really been key person on this, so he would be able to.
Do they have consultants, and there's a lot of science, that's, oh, yeah. My group did it, absolutely.
Yeah, they are working. They're working with an outside movie. The town worked with one vendor during the last, when he's upgraded, and I guess they identified a lot of, uh, deficiencies in that work. So they're working with a different vendor, I believe it's the same vendor that the, uh, that state works with, and I believe it's the same vendor that the fire department worked with.
Well.
Obviously, part of that, so it's. That's the same coverage.
I have a many.
Yeah.
And it seems like a large, you know, the space of the night.
Yes. So.
Yeah. I, I know, I know, I know, I know the radios that the police, the fire department uses are a different brand.
Well, it's not so radios, it's towers.
I can't hear you, George, I'm sorry.
It's not the radios, it's the, it's the towers, and, you know.
Correct, all I'm saying is.
Seaters and antennas up on the towers. Getting access to these towers is, is a big deal.
I understand that, but the fire department did everything without going into state towers.
I just.
The, the fire department also operates on a completely different frequency.
Correct.
They're, they're running in the four hundred megahertz frequencies, the police departments are in the eight hundreds. They have a whole different requirement for data transfer and everything else.
But, that's fine, that's fine, but it's gotta be a happy medium, that's all I'm saying.
All they have to do is correct the hot, the, uh, dead spots on the Chamberlain Highway. And by tying in with the state towers, they're just gonna be using the same radio equipment. They're gonna have to do some modifications, it's not replacing the whole radio system.
Understand, but for one point two million dollars?
Well, you're thinking, well, it's, if you're doing data, it's night and day.
That's, that's fine.
It's like, it's much, much more complex, much more bandwidth needed, eight hundred megahertz doesn't have a propagation that four hundred does, it's a whole different animal.
Simply, George, I am simply asking questions.
Nothing, I'm just saying, it's a whole different animal.
And, and. Further along, and, and have something to really come in and say, like, to borrow this much money, use this much fund balance. Um, the plan would be to have the deputy, to be able to speak through the full process and what they're doing and why, and why they're making sense, uh, the right idea. Okay, um, the only error I've had is, so obviously the next one is on twenty. So I don't know if you guys are, I'm gonna go to meeting on the twenty nine, zoom meeting. Hopefully, the budget passes, you have two days, and the meet for probably two minutes on the twenty ninth, except for the already. If it doesn't pass, then you have to develop another budget, the same budget, a different budget, um, that goes back to the council. So I don't know if the twenty nine works for anybody.
Yeah, May twenty eighth.
May twenty eighth, we still have a referendum, right after the already.
I'm good with the twenty ninth.
So you want to zoom, twenty nine, you want to be sixty hour, seven, or, let me get six, I don't know what everybody's thoughts are.
I'm good with six.
Right, I will send out a notice immediately, and it'll be just like the last one.
And, and we, uh, can we invest some money on microphones for that room? Just bring it up.
Yeah, I talked to IT. We hear that from a lot of folks, that if you're speaking directly towards the microphone, or speaking loudly, you're fine, but if turn at all, it's basic. But the silent film, so.
I mean, when we, when I was at, at Emsores, you know, we, we had those cable things right in the middle, that they had speakers that, you know, you had a center. Council, then a couple of speaker leads that went off, and they're, you're directly, you say, wow, they're not that expensive. It's like, it's just like, it's darky.
Yeah.
Right, anything else?
That was it, unless you have a question?
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Here are you, Tim.